Recording in progress.
It is April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Tuesday, and it is seven eighteen P. M. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. There are two hearings on our agenda tonight. The first is an amendment to major project site plan review with regard to twenty-eight Glengarry Road, which is the Hillside School, and that is scheduled for seven twenty P. M. And we have a hearing scheduled for seven forty-five P. M. An amendment to major project site plan review with regard to the Learning Tree Preschool located at two twenty-five Highland Avenue. First, we'll confirm that there's a quorum of members of the planning board present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present, and then I will introduce the planning department and staff of the town. Artie Crocker.
Here, present.
Gene McKnight.
Present.
And the chair is present, so we have three of the five planning board members present. We have a quorum. Adam Block should be joining us shortly, and Natasha Espada will not be joining us tonight. And our planning staff, our planning director, Lee Newman.
Present.
And our assistant planning director, Alexandra Cle.
Present.
Thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss the projects or proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.niedma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. And for each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes our usual preliminary remarks. Before we get started, I want to welcome our newest planning board member, Artie Crocker. Welcome to the planning board.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it very much. And it's really nice to be here. I've certainly been viewing for a number of years here and there, and so hopefully we're going on, and it's nice to be part of it. Lee and Alex and I had a great intro today this morning. And it was very nice. It was very nice to hear all the great efforts they put in, all the things coming up, and it's nice to be part of it. It's really nice. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Artie. It's great to have you on the board. It's seven twenty-two, but I would like to give Adam Block a couple of minutes to get here. Unless, Alex, please check with the attendees. If somebody who is scheduled to be here for the Hillside School has an objection to waiting until Chris gets here, please raise your hand. I won't give him too long. I'll give him till seven thirty.
We're gonna need him for a quorum, so we have to wait.
Oh, that's right. That's right. We need four planning board members for a quorum on a special permit, so thank you, Lee. I forgot that. And so he is coming, and we apologize for the delay. So let's take a look at our agenda and see if there's something else that we can discuss and vote on.
Maybe item three, the recommendation on the street acceptance of Hutter Ridge Road.
Yes, that's exactly what I was looking at.
Okay.
It's Adam. It's Adam. So let's, since we're already a little bit late for the first hearing. Adam, are you all settled, or do you need another minute or two?
I'm good. Thanks for asking. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
All right. Welcome, bud.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it.
Okay. So Alex, if you would bring over Hank Half and Chris Heap. While I introduce our first public hearing, which was scheduled for seven twenty, it is now seven twenty-three. This was a public hearing on an amendment to major project site plan review number twenty-eighteen dash oh-five. Town of Needham is the petitioner for the property located at twenty-eight Glengarry Road, Needham, Massachusetts. This is a request to remove a condition, condition number three point two of the existing special permit, which would then allow the temporary move of the Needham Public Schools Administration staff to the Hillside School. We have here for the petitioner, we have town council, Chris Heap. And Hank, I forgot your title. Hank Half of the town, who is our?
Director of Building Design and Construction.
I'm not going to repeat that. Too long. I'm too old. I'll forget. I'll forget all the words. Welcome, guys. Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So Hank and I are here tonight.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Before we proceed, I'm sorry, procedural matter. May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the public notice?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to declare that the motion was made by Gene McKnight and seconded by Adam Block. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take the roll call vote on the motion to dispense with the reading of the notice. Artie Crocker.
Yes.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Sorry, Chris. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. So as I was saying, Hank and I are here tonight to request amendments of major project special permit number two thousand and eighteen dash zero five. This is the special permit for twenty-eight Glengarry Road, and this property is the site of the former Hillside Elementary School. And the permit is the one that authorized the construction and use of the property for the temporary police and fire station while the new headquarters downtown was under construction. That permit was issued in two thousand and eighteen, and the temporary use and occupancy by the police and fire departments has now concluded. Now, if you recall, the permit itself required the town to return the property to its original condition at the conclusion of the police and fire department's temporary use. And we were last before the planning board last summer, summer of two thousand and twenty-one, to ask for a modification of the restoration plan that was going to be used to return the site to its existing conditions, more or less. The main issue that was discussed with the planning board last summer when we were asking for that first modification of the permit was whether and for how long we could leave up some construction fencing at the perimeter of the site. Well, I'm now pleased to report that all of that construction fencing has been removed. That was removed, I think, early last month. The parking has been restriped, and the site has been generally returned to the shape it was in before the police and fire department's use of the property. And late last week, we submitted a stamped as-built plan showing the existing conditions that the property had been returned to. Now, the reason we're here tonight for this new requested modification is that the town now intends to move the school administration department into the existing building on the property temporarily while the Emory Grover Building downtown is being renovated. This school administration use of the property does not itself require zoning relief from the planning board. There is no addition to the building itself. And we don't exceed any of the thresholds for major project site plan approval in section seven point four of the zoning bylaw. And we're also not adding any new parking to the site, so we don't exceed any of the thresholds there. However, the existing permit does include condition three point two, which states that there shall be no use of the parking lot for municipal purposes except as needed for drop off and pickup of possible storage in the building, and that there shall be no municipal overnight parking at the property. We will certainly need to use the existing parking lot for the school administration's occupancy of the building while that's happening. So we're here to ask the board remove that condition from the existing decision so that the existing parking lot can be used for the school administration's use. As I said again, the use itself, well, there's no construction contemplated that would exceed any site plan approval thresholds. So really, this is just a matter of going back, looking through the existing permit, and needing to eliminate a condition that, on its face, prevents the proposed use of the property. So all we're really asking for is a matter of permitting, is that that condition be taken out of the decision. Otherwise, the temporary use will proceed after that. So that's all I have, by way of prepared comments, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions the board members may have about the use of the site or the relief that we're looking for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started with questions and comments from the board, let me read into the record that we do have an email from Dennis Condon, our fire chief. The fire department is okay with this change. We have an email from Tara Gurge, the Assistant Public Health Director. Just getting back to you on your request for Public Health Division's comments for the amendment to the project located at twenty-eight Glengarry Old Hillside School. The Public Health Division has no comments to share at this time. Let me make sure that I believe it was just those two. I'm confused about one thing, Chris. If we just delete, it was just those two. If we just delete section three point two, would we be deleting the requirement that there be no overnight parking?
Yeah, so you would be deleting that part as well.
Don't you think we should leave that part in?
As I think of it, Mr. Chairman, there's really no, I don't anticipate any overnight parking necessarily, but to the extent that a car gets left there intermittently, you know, I don't think it's a major issue one way or the other, but but I don't want to be in violation of the condition to the extent that there's any either intermittent or unanticipated overnight parking.
Okay. I just have one more question for Lee. The as-built plan has been submitted. Has it been accepted?
It's submitted, and it's fine.
Great, thank you. Okay, that's it for my questions and comments. Yes, Adam, you have your hand raised.
Chris, what was the reason for preventing overnight parking in the previous use?
I don't know the answer to that question. That was one that the board imposed at the time, and I honestly couldn't tell you what the concern was.
Lee, do you recall?
I don't recall. It's not a standard condition. We don't usually address it so frontally in our decisions. It's kind of an anomaly. I don't recall what the concern was at the time.
Hank, you have a comment?
Yeah, as you know, the fire department and the police department work twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. So there was overnight parking occurring. It was active. But I don't anticipate that there'll be that demand from the school department, but occasionally they may leave a car there or a van.
And I don't also using the parking lot for municipal purposes. So I'm not quite sure why this condition was there to begin with. Adam, I'm sorry. Do you want to continue?
No, that's fine. I don't have a problem if if a teacher or an administrator or someone else otherwise in the school department, you know, does need to leave a vehicle or two or several. You know, in the back, I think we just want to make sure that there's otherwise, you know, accessibility, but I I don't see a problem one way or the other.
Gene, do you have any questions or comments?
This isn't necessarily relevant to the request, but I just would like to be aware. How long is it anticipated that the property will be used? When do you think that use for temporary occupancy by the school department will cease?
Hank, sure. Go ahead and answer that for us.
Well, the Emory Grover Project, assuming it gets funded, would proceed in construction, and the school department would move out in December of this year. And it would be eighteen months before they could move back into the, into the Emory Grover Building. However, I would anticipate that the school will continue. There is no plan to demolish the building as of yet. And so I would anticipate that the school would be used for storage and other things by the school department who have jurisdictional control over the building till such time that the town decides to demolish it.
All right, thank you. And I drove up there the other day and observed that the upper parking lot had been restriped, and the lower parking lot, although it hadn't been restriped, its original striping was visible for the parking, and the construction fencing had all been removed, and the site looked very clean and, you know, very, very well cleaned up for its future use. Children were playing in the playground, and everything just looked fine. So I see no reason, of course, to not to approve this change in the conditions.
Thank you. Artie, you have any questions or comments?
Not perfectly legitimate. Makes perfect sense to do so. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. So we'll check the attendees and see, because this is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak, I'm not seeing anybody with a hand raised. I'll give a minute or two. I saw that Adam has something else to say or to ask, so I'll give it another minute or two. If anybody would like to make a comment or have a question, please raise your hand using the raise hand button. Yes, Adam.
I just, gentlemen, a couple of, just one quick question, I guess. In the event that the Emory Grover article, you know, is not approved at town meeting, you know, then we have ourselves a situation where the special permit's been amended. And I guess, Chris, the town would need to come back for any revision based on, you know, future use, although we don't anticipate that happening. I just don't know if there's anything that we need to safeguard, or if you want to safeguard anything.
I don't believe, that's an interesting point, but I don't believe that would affect, I guess, the relief that we're looking for, and I don't think it would necessarily affect anything the planning board, to my mind, would need to do. You know, if the article fails at town meeting, I don't anticipate a scenario in which we suddenly are parking a lot of cars out there on the site. And any other temporary or permanent use of the building is likely going to require some, well, any other temporary or permanent use of the building that involves additions or construction would likely require more relief all on its own. So I think we're back in front of you in the event that something substantially new or different gets proposed for the site.
Understood. Thank you.
Chris and Hank, I did, I was looking at the warrant, and I saw that there is a warrant article for funding to make some repairs to the building. Is that something that we're going to have to look at? Or is that pretty much something that we don't need to do anything with the special permit for? Yes, Hank?
Well, in the documents that were submitted to you, it showed the exterior elevations, and there are some replacement of air conditioners, you know, minor additions of fresh air intakes. And the separate article related to the boiler replacement is all interior to the building, and it's basically to maintain the building until such time that it's to be demolished.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the board? I do see a hand raised. Alex, there's somebody going by the name of Louis, Note Ten. If you would bring that person over, please. Please state your name and address for the record, and you may have to unmute yourself.
Hello, Lou Wolfson, twenty-nine Seminole Road, and abutted to the property as well, up on Crescent Road. I don't have any issues with the proposed parking, but I do have a question more so where it's been used for the police and fire. It's now going to be used for the school administration building. I'm just wondering about the current status. I know that it's down gradient of the MDL property, and I'm just wondering about future development of the property based upon the current status. You know, you're talking eighteen months. You're talking about potentially demolishing it further down the road. I'm just wondering what adaptive reuses that could be down the future? And if there's been any updates on the status of the DEQ, DP rather.
Hank, can you answer that for us?
Certainly. The building continues to be monitored continuously for air quality. That is part of the agreement with the DP and with MDL. Any work that is done on the site does require any of the excavations, for instance, that were done during the the fire station addition had to be monitored by an LSP licensed site professional at such time that the school department, the current agreement on the property between the school department and the select board, is that at such time that the school department no longer has a use for the site that it would then be transferred over to the jurisdiction of the select board? So those decisions are decisions in the future. We don't know what the timing is for that. But until such time that the building is demolished, it will continue to be monitored for the air quality, interior air quality.
Okay, thank you, because I know the soil conditions have improved drastically over the years, so I know that up above we can do residential development should one decide to. And I'm just hoping down the road that there'll be some great adaptive reuse for that property. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you, Louis. Good to see you, by the way.
Nice to see you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Yes, Gene.
Just following on that question and answer, I had heard a while back the idea that the Hillside School might be used as swing space when other schools are undergoing renovation. Has it been determined that that's not feasible because of the extent of renovation or the extent of site cleanup that would be required for that use?
Hank?
Mr. Chair, yes, it has been studied. The building commissioner has made it clear that if it were to be reused for educational purposes that all of the required code upgrades would be necessary. And that would be quite an expensive operation. Seeing the full replacement of all of the windows to meet energy code, the replacement of all the mechanical systems to meet energy code, structural bracing, the inclusion of an elevator to access all levels within the building. And the building has constraints because of its floor-to-floor height that limit the amount of HVAC or type of HVAC that could go into the building. So while not impossible, it would be very expensive to return to that function. But that, in the school master plan, if the town is successful in getting the next MSBA project going, that would certainly be one of the considerations studied for further assessment.
Thank you. So it might still be studied. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I do not see any other hands raised by the attendees. So if there are no other comments or questions from the planning board members, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Artie Crocker and a second by Gene McKnight. So ready discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The hearing is closed. Gentlemen, thank you. Good to see you. And Lee, I assume that we will have the decision and we'll vote the relief at the next meeting?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it is now seven forty-five. Where is my agenda?
Mr. Chair, do we want to take that planning board report out of order for a quick, maybe five-minute discussion on the zoning articles for town meeting?
Well, I was about to say, be still my heart, because we're actually getting to a second hearing at the time that it's scheduled for.
So. Don't stop now, Paul. Go for it.
Don't stop now being late?
Yeah, don't stop now being late, Paul. Go for it. Go for it, man. Break the record, buddy.
We do have, I believe Katie King is here.
Yeah, she's present.
To discuss this matter, so we will take a couple of minutes so that we will keep our record clean and start the second hearing a little bit late. And Katie, welcome, and let's discuss. This comes under our agenda of the director's report to the planning board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good to see the rest of the board members. Congratulations, Artie.
Thank you, Katie. I don't know if you and I have met in person before, but thank you. Nice to meet you.
You too. Thank you very much for taking me on short notice, add it to the agenda. I wanted to just come and connect as we're getting ready for town meeting. You know, this board had worked diligently on the zoning article for breweries. When the planning board and the select board met earlier this past fall to first discuss the issue and came to consensus that it was a good one to move forward on, our work plan really had it that this board would go first, frame the zoning amendment. We'd get an up and or down vote at town meeting, and then we would subsequently have the select board make any changes that they needed to make to their liquor license regulations based on the framework of the approved zoning. I think you all and at the staff level as well over the last week or so have been getting a number of questions about the zoning article that are actually both about the zoning and the licensing policy questions. So I think at this point, our recommendation and request to the board So I think at this point, our our recommendation and request to the board is if you would vote to withdraw the zoning article from the May town meeting warrant and defer it to the fall. This would give us time to let the select board run their full process on the licensing side, so we could go to town meeting with a more comprehensive view of the the issue holistically before they have to vote on the zoning component.
Thank you, Katie. We have any any questions or comments? Well, let me, yes, Adam.
I would, I would say, since Gene and I were doing a bulk of the work on the zoning with, you know, with with Lee and with Amy and I think Katie even helpful too in the process. That it makes sense that we ensure that we're aligned between the zoning and the and the licensing framework, so that when we do present to town meeting that we're able to that we are able to, you know, address both and provide, you know, a full picture of you know, how the zoning would play out in terms of an operation, be able to provide a couple of examples. So I think that makes sense. And, you know, I would make that motion. You know, after the discussion period from our colleagues.
I want to comment, and I will ask Lee to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that by deferring this until the fall, we we are opening up the the draft of the proposed bylaw change. We're kind of, I think we're kind of legally starting from scratch, although, you know, we're starting with with what we have. But I believe that by doing this, we will have a new public hearing. We'll have a new, we we may have the ability to make changes to the proposed bylaw in ways that we are not permitted to do now because we had published the the bylaw in the notice, but we will be republishing it, having a new public hearing, so so we can raise some of the concerns that had have have already been addressed, well, that have already been raised. I shouldn't say that they have been addressed necessarily, but they have been raised and we may not have been able to to address them because of the the public hearing process, legal requirements around it, so we we can, we can now address those and hope hopefully have it have it all squared away from the for the fall meeting. Gene, you had your hand raised. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
I just wanted to make sure I understand that was it was it the select board that requested? Or is this coming from staff? I just wanted to understand that.
Sure. Yep, it's a staff recommendation, but the town manager did connect with the select board members and and they're supportive of this deferral.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you. To close the loop, Artie, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
I think it's the correct decision to do. I personally thought this this will make it better.
I agree. Thank you. This is not a hearing, so we will not take any comments from the public, although I don't see any hands raised anyway. So, Adam, you suggested that you would make a motion. Would you please do so?
Mr. Chair, I move that we withdraw our article for town meeting with respect to the breweries in town and to pick it up at such time as the board is prepared to to return to town meeting in the future.
We have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We have any further discussion? Not seeing any hands raised. We'll call the roll. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous, four to nothing. We will withdraw the article. The petition is withdraw the article. Lee, if you would report that to the appropriate town officials. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, Kate.
Okay, we can now go to our seven forty-five hearing. It is seven fifty-three. Only eight minutes over. This is an amendment to major project site plan review number two thousand eight dash oh eight. Learning Tree Preschool, Inc., two twenty-five Highland Avenue, the petitioner for the property located at two twenty-five Highland Avenue. Regarding a request to expand its current operation at this location to include the abutting former you break I fix tenant space. And we have with us. I know George, George Junior should be with us. There's George. I had you hidden behind my my participant screen. On my list of participants here, yes, we have Maura Denigan. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Please correct me if I mispronounced your name, Maura of the Learning Tree, the owner and the applicant. And we have with us John. And again, if I mispronounce your name, John, please correct me. Giannakopoulos, landlord, the owner.
Very good.
Thank you. Welcome all. George, I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
And and first of congratulations, Artie. Welcome to the board.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it.
So so as indicated, this is a pretty straightforward, relatively simple application relative to two twenty-five Highland.
George, I'm sorry, I made the same mistake that I made the first one. May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of a notice?
Some room.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion co-made by Artie and Artie and Adam and seconded by Gene. Any discussion? We'll call the roll. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I've only been chair for almost a year. One of these days, I'm gonna get that right. Okay, George.
Sure, you will. Sure.
Practice makes perfect. All right, so so as I was saying, this is for the commercial building at the corner of Highland Avenue and Wexford Street. And this is a two-story building. The lot is just a little bit under sixteen thousand square feet. The building was initially approved back in two thousand eight under major project site plan review with a couple of amendments. The top floor of the building is currently occupied by Gardner Mattress, which is a retail mattress store. The first floor is occupied by Snippets on the corner. About eleven hundred and thirty-four square feet. That's a children's hair cutting salon. Then there's a space that is currently vacant. That is the subject of this hearing this evening. And then last on the first floor is the Learning Tree, who has been there basically for the last, coming on two years now, eleven hundred and nine square feet. Now, there's also a common hallway and two common bathrooms on the first floor, sort of in the back of the building. Now, the Learning Tree was established in nineteen ninety-seven. They currently operate three different locations, including the Needham location that was approved in twenty twenty. And they would like to expand into that vacant space that is next to them. That was previously the you break I fix it store. It's about seven hundred and seventy-nine square feet of space, so it's a little bit smaller than their current space. It's directly adjacent, so all they have to do really is punch through the wall and then make a few minor nonstructural alterations on the interior of that space. The increase in enrollment would be an additional nineteen children with an additional two staff. That would bring total enrollment up to forty-two children and seven staff. Hours would remain the same, seven thirty AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. The use would basically stay the same, so it really is the exact use that was authorized in twenty twenty, just expanding into the adjacent space. Now, the use itself is allowed both as of right under the bylaw, and it's also qualifies as exempt use under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section three. We did have some discussion at the hearing in twenty twenty on that point. But but the board agreed that it was an exempt use, so either way, either under the bylaw or under the statute, the the use itself is allowed.
Yes, George, this board is intimately familiar with forty-one A's.
Yes. Yes, I know. I, yes. And and anyway, so the issue really is, the the reason we're before you is primarily because there's an existing site plan on the building that says the uses are supposed to be X. And the Learning Tree, although approved for for the one end space, is a use that is not within the sort of the basic framework of the special permit, so we really need further relief under site plan review because of the existing special permit. In addition, because there's a change to the parking, we probably need an adjustment of the parking waiver. But for once, the total parking count actually has gone down, as I'll run through in just a minute. Although that has more to do with the with the upper floor than anything else. So previously, when the you break I fix store was in place and the upstairs was used by Jamboree, the total parking demand for the building was thirty-nine spaces. Now it has gone down to thirty-eight spaces. So as indicated, it's it's one space less. And and it's in the in my my letter, you know, I I break it out, but basically the 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 first floor you wind up with, well, there's a basement that you wind up with two spaces. But as the board knows from previous hearings on this building, it's basically storage space in the basement, so it's even though the the bylaw requires us to calculate parking, it's not like the basement is manned on any regular basis. So it's basically parking spaces for nobody. So there's two spaces for that. Then on the first floor, the snippets requires a total of seven spaces. The existing, I'm sorry, the Learning Tree as expanded would require sixteen spaces. And and then the second floor, the retail is now thirteen spaces. It was all total up to thirty-eight spaces. There are only twenty-two spaces on site. There's an additional five spaces offsite for a total of twenty-seven. So obviously, there is a shortfall of eleven spaces. But again, now the shortfall is one less than it used to be. It used to be twelve spaces. So in all, it's a net improvement in the in the numbers on paper. But even better, it's the the change in tenancy in the building is a a dramatic improvement with respect to the parking in the building. Because now with Gardner Mattress on the upper floor, as a practical matter, they don't have anywhere near, you know, not even close to the impact that Jamboree had. And then add to that the fact that Learning Tree is a drop off, you know, really drop off you, so you don't have stable kind of fixed parking demand from them. So as a result, there's a lot more fluidity and a lot more spaces available in general in the parking lot. So so, you know, both from sort of a practical standpoint and from a from a calculation standpoint, either way or both ways, it looks like that the parking situation is and will be better with this expansion. And so with that, I mean, that really covers it and happy to answer any questions you have, but it it really is the existing use just taking, expanding into the the adjacent space.
Okay. I I just have a couple of questions. As I'm listening to you and thinking about it. Since there are only twenty-two spaces there, and although you do open earlier, I presume than the other uses in the building. How has the flow of pickup and drop off been with your current enrollment? And do you anticipate the additional nineteen students generating much more traffic? I guess that's Wexford Street and on that corner and into and into and out of the parking lot. How 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 is that flow of pickup and drop off traffic going to be affected by the additional enrollment? And I'm just curious as to whether with the additional enrollment, you're going to need to make any changes to the to the play area that you have outdoors. Those are my two questions.
Right. I'm not sure. Maura, Maura Denigan's on here, who she's the owner operator of Learning Tree.
Sure. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
And so play areas, we schedule the children per class in the play area. So the children have different times. They don't all go out at the same time.
Okay.
And for party.
There aren't any requirements by the state, what what is it, the EEC?
No, no.
Being based on enrollment or anything like that?
No, well, we can't go over ten children in this player area at a time.
At a time, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the and the traffic issues?
No, the traffic is fine so far anyway. And drop off is usually like between eight and nine, and then it's usually between three and five in the evening time, so it's usually just a five minute drop off if even for parents. It it runs pretty smoothly because the their parents don't come into the school.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Adam, you had your hand raised.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I did, I did just want to gain a little more clarity on the current drop off and and pickup scenario. Do any parents go into the facility in the morning to drop off?
No.
And
Yes. New by more, thank you.
And was that the case before the pandemic? Or you actually opened during the pandemic?
Yes, yes, we've kept it like that. It actually works out better for us. And and we will be keeping it like that, you know, parents would have to schedule a visit.
Okay, and and the same with draw, the same with pickup, they don't go into the building at all?
No, no. And it is much easier for us that the parents don't. And and they're happy with it, which is good.
And and then is there, what what kind of congestion have you seen around, you know, Wexford, you know, and you know, and Highland? I know that there's a gas station at the corner, on the adjacent corner, there's Gulf Tech. I'm curious what type of, if you have, I'm sure you have records of how many children are dropped off in the hour, let's say between eight and nine or between seven and eight, is that right?
It's usually between eight and nine.
And do you know how how many parents you have at that time, or how many children are dropped off?
Well, we usually have, well, there might be like four or five at a time. And early in the morning, and then they come at various different times, but we've been working out pretty okay at the moment anyway.
Okay. I'm just trying to imagine a scenario where if you have more than you know, I can't remember what times George Snippets opens.
So both both Snippets and Gardner open at ten. So they open after the drop off times. And then Snippets is open later on, but but Gardner Mattress on a couple of days closes at four and on a couple of days closes at two. So they're actually, Gardner Mattress is actually closed a couple of days even before the pickup time. So this is
So you can see where I'm going with this. I just want to get a sense of any kind of traffic congestion. You know, at either, you know, drop off or pickup, and what you're effectively saying is there is no, in spite of the deficiency in the parking demand, there is no traffic buildup in that area.
No, there hasn't been so far. It's been fine.
And okay. And Snippets, you know, hasn't had a problem with their customers competing for parking. I've certainly have taken my son to Snippets to have his, you know, haircut at after school before, you know, at that location, and I haven't observed a personal, I haven't observed a problem. But I wasn't really focused on it in the point of view of your, you know, early childhood, you know, your daycare, so. But I understand what you're saying. I did also have a question on the I mean, clearly what we're dealing with with parking is a need for, and Lee, I think we're gonna deal with this later this year, is a new parking study, because for all of these uses, we're continuing to waive, as George knows well. You know, you know, parking requirement. Uh, you know, uh, you know, parking requirement, we, uh, waiving parking requirement. So, but George, in the, in the, in the site plan, I saw that in the news, the existing U break I fix space, there is one area that's four hundred and forty six square feet, and then the front area is seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy three square feet. And it's noted as a total of seven hundred and seventy three square feet. But when I add the two up, unless I'm, it's vacation math, I get eight oh one. So it's, 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 it's a small, you know, difference, and yet it still is a difference. And I wasn't sure what accounts for that.
Uh, I, I can't really, uh, answer that. You know, the seven seventy nine comes from sort of the original numbers for the building, you know, the, 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 the new number was seven seventy three. So it's, it's off slightly, but it's within, you know, within six square feet. And, and I think part of that had to do with the interior wall wasn't counted in the seven seventy three. But whereas the other two add, not adding up, I'm not sure why they don't, you know, why they don't add up.
So if we have an eight oh one as opposed to seven seventy three, I just, you know, sometimes when commercial space we're dealing with, you know, will include the common area, but that's not what this is. This is the actual main area.
Right.
I don't know if that, you know, I don't know, Lee, if that requires a, a new an amended plan to reflect the actual calculation?
I'll, I'll take a look at it. If it does, we can do it through a plan modification.
Okay. And then I think I had another question, but for now, uh, I think we're, I, there was a question about, uh, uh, food service, but I'll come to that after when we talk about the comments from the staff. That's all I have at this moment, Mr. Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Yes, Jean, you can go ahead.
I'm just, I just wanted, uh, because I didn't hear, uh, what was said about, uh, the time for, um, drop off, I mean, excuse me, for pickup of the children. I heard that the drop off is eight to nine in the morning. That's the typical time. Um, but when is the pickup in the evening?
Um, it's usually between three and five, five o'clock.
Oh, three, three and five. Actually, I thought that what was said, and then I thought, oh, that couldn't be right because three is so early. But, um, it's between three and five. That is surprising that it's so early in the day.
The younger children, sometimes the parents come just after naptime, which is three o'clock. So.
Okay, um, well, then that, that seems good to me because I imagine the traffic that picks up in generally in the evening after five in the vicinity. So that was really the only question I had for clarification. I remember thinking this through quite a bit when we first approved the, the learning tree for that site. Um, and this modification, um, I have no, uh, question, no further questions or comments about it.
Okay. Artie Crocker, any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Uh, yeah, no, I do have some questions. It's great that you're looking to expand. It's great that your business is going well at that. I do, I do have some questions. So, so, um, the play area obviously is somewhat obviously to the left of the building. I just download a high resolution imagery source to the left of the building. You were talking about how many, I think it's to the left and that strip to the left of the building. Is that where the play playground? So you're talking about how many kids to go out there during a time period you're limited. So you, you're going from, you're adding, was it nineteen kids to your, to your total?
Yes.
And what, so what is the total now that you're expecting?
Uh, we have. Yes.
Forty two. And so, and so in, in that, and, and so it's, it seems like there might be a limiting factor as far as the, the hours during the day when they can be out there, but I'm more, I'm, I'm more curious about is I, I've, I've seen, I have a number, I have a number of friends that actually have nursery schools for drop off and play up, play, drop off and pick up, not in need them. And, uh, what, what, what exactly is your process for drop up and pickup? I know there's a parking lot there. I know there's a road coming, Wexford Street, but what is, what is in fact your, your procedure for drop off and pickup?
And well, we have no real procedure in place. Parents come usually between eight and nine. And we haven't had to schedule any parents for any times. So.
So, so the parents is, so the parents pull into, so the parents pull into the parking lot. Would they do whatever they need to do to get, drop the kid off and bring them to the door, then the child goes inside?
And then, yes, yes.
Okay. 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 And, and, okay. Okay, I'm not, I just, I have a little concern about the congestion going to Wexford Street, but it's just nice that you're doing well. I just, I'm a little concerned about the congestion backing into Wexford Street, but, you know, that's all. I'm, I'm fine, Paul.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Um, I do have a, um, a little bit of, uh,
There is a hand raised. Just wanted to make sure you do know that.
Oh, I see that now. Yes, thank you. My, I had to scroll, scroll back up. Uh, but before we get to, uh, the person with the hand raised, um, we do have some communication on this. We have a, a letter from the, um, landlord, uh, who, who was, who was here tonight, but, uh, uh, officially the, the BSA LLC, um, authorizing Maura and George to add on their behalf. Uh, we have an email from Dennis Condon, our fire chief. The fire department is okay with this proposal. We have a letter from the public works department, from Thomas Ryder, our town engineer. And the bottom line is we have no comment or objection to the proposed waiver. And lastly, we have, um, an email from Tara Gurge of the, um, Public Health Division. Uh, we just wanted to forward to you our previous comments that we submitted for this proposal back on July two, twenty twenty. Our comments remain the same. However, now all of our food perimeter applications are listed online. And Tara provides the link. And quickly, uh, from July twenty twenty, there were two bullet points. Uh, the first being, uh, well, asking whether there will be food distributed or prepared. Uh, and if so, a proper food establishment permit will need to be obtained. And, uh, second bullet point was before the facility is allowed to open a set of COVID protocols. So, um, I assume that that's been all taken care of with the Board of Health and.
We don't serve food. The children bring in their food.
Right. I'm sure that, that if there were an issue, Ms. Gurge would have pointed it out in her email. So we do have a hand raised. Um, Elizabeth Caponia, uh, would, would like to speak. So Alex, if you would bring Ms. Caponia over. Appreciate it. And again, uh, Ms. Caponia, please state your name and address for the record. And you will need to unmute. Oh, you are unmuted.
Great. Um, hello, uh, my name's Elizabeth Caponia. I'm at twenty seven Highland Terrace and town meeting member reelected for president J. Thank you. Uh, I want to congratulate Artie Crocker for being elected um, with such a wide margin because I believe he showed concern for issues in our local neighborhood. So thank you, Artie, and welcome.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Uh, so, um, I'm very happy that Learning Tree is doing so well that they need to expand. That's very good. And, um, I, I have no objection to this. Welcome them to expand in our neighborhood. I think they will be wonderful tenants here. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And it's good to see you again. Thank you for coming. Um, I don't see any others, any other hands raised. So unless the members of the board have any more questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
So Artie Crocker got there first. Do I have a second?
Jean, do you want to take a bite at the apple?
I thought you seconded it already. A second.
Okay, motion made by Artie Crocker, seconded by Jean McKnight. Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, four to nothing, unanimous decision. The hearing is closed. And again, Lee, I assume that we'll have a decision to review and we'll take our, our vote at the next meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. George, always good to see you.
All right, same here.
Maura and John, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Good, good luck, Maura. Good luck, Maura. It's wonderful that you're doing well. It's good luck.
Yes.
Wonderful. Wonderful that you're doing well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, uh, the next item on our agenda, with regard to a recommendation on street acceptance for Hunter Ridge Road. So we have a letter from, um, the Public Works Department from Tom Ryder, our town engineer. Uh, dear members of the board, in accordance with MGL Chapter forty one, section eighty one, aye, your recommendation is requested regarding the proposed street acceptance of Hunter Hut, Hutter, H U T T E R, Ridge Road. And it runs from, it is a dead end street. And it's off of, um, Webster Street, uh, near South Street. And, uh, it runs from Webster Street easterly to the end of the dead end road, distance of six hundred and fifty one feet, more or less. And, uh, we have to vote on our recommendation and, uh, Mr. Ryder requests that, uh, we send a copy of our decision to the engineering department for their files. Any, uh, Lee, do you want to speak to this?
I'm sure. So this is.
Yes.
Yeah. So this is basically a subdivision that this board approved. I don't know if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we had a request to actually reduce the performance bond on the subdivision down to a maintenance bond. Um, and the engineering department went out and reviewed the final as-built plans for the subdivision and the work that had been completed to date and indicated that all the work had been satisfactory complete, completed. And this vote board voted basically to move the subdivision to a maintenance bond, which is just basically ensuring that there's no deterioration between the time the bond is reduced and the street is formally accepted as a public way. So it's, it's ready to be accepted. It's on the warrant for the, uh, May annual town meeting. This is a normal procedure that we go through at the time when subdivision roads are complete and they're anticipated to be accepted as public ways. So there's two steps for the board in this case is to basically make it, make a recommendation on, uh, the acceptance firmly legally, you're required to do that. And then ultimately to sign the street acceptance plan, which the engineering department um, is preparing. So there's two motions required. One is the recommendation and one is basically to sign the street acceptance plan once it's complete.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have two motions on the floor then. Do I have seconds on the two motions?
Uh, yeah, second.
Okay, so, so the two motions are, uh, one, two. Well, actually, um, Adam, I think we have to refine your first motion. Are you making a motion to accept or a motion to deny?
I'm making a motion to accept, uh, the road.
Thank you. So you have a motion to accept the road and then a, uh, motion to sign the, uh, street acceptance plan once prepared by our engineering department. That motion, both motions have been made by Adam Block and seconded by Jean McKnight. And so now we can open it up for discussion.
On our mo, if I may.
Yes.
On the recommendation, uh, to accept it, we're not actually accepting the road. We're, we're making, uh, the motion is to recommend acceptance.
That's correct. Town meeting accepts it.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that is clear. That's the motion. And I drove up there and, uh, you know, you indicated that we recently had a vote to release a bond. So I don't remember approving this subdivision. How long ago was it that, um, that the subdivision was approved?
I would be guessing, I would be going off my memory. Um, it's a Patrini subdivision. Um, I don't know, Alex, within the last decade, but I, I can't remember. I can't put a year on it, Jean. I'm sorry. That would be a pile myself.
But it was within my tenure on the, uh, planning board. I just simply don't remember. And I recall you, uh, mentioning with regard to the subdivision that it was, uh, developed under, uh, I, I don't know if it's called cluster zoning, uh, but a certain provision in our zoning that allows for road, for somewhat smaller lots in the acre zone on this Hutter Ridge. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, I was just thinking on that.
But it, it was done, I think, with a narrower street width, um, which is maybe what you're seeing out there.
Okay.
With no, with no sidewalk.
Uh, yes, no sidewalk. Yep.
Alex just texted me the year. It was twenty thirteen, December of twenty thirteen. She looked it up.
Twenty thirteen, okay. So that was only, uh, eight, uh, eight or ten years ago, nine years ago. Um, so, uh, uh, sometimes when we approve subdivisions for cul-de-sacs and with narrower roads than these standards call for, uh, we have the expectation that the road will not be accepted as a public way. And sometimes we even have a condition that, uh, there will never be a petition to accept it. We didn't have anything like that with this road, correct?
No, we, we didn't have it with this road. I mean, we did, we did de- develop some reduced, you know, standards for this area of town that allowed it to go down to a slightly narrower width. Um, just to kind of preserve more of the character of that neighborhood. And still enable it to be accepted as a public way.
And still have, and still having enough access for public safety.
Yes, this was, this was anticipated to be a public way.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's the only question I had. So.
So I just took a quick look at the statute. And it states that the planning board is to issue a report. And so I suppose technically what we're doing with this motion is we are voting a report to town meeting, which is, uh, that the road is complete and that we recommend acceptance as a public way. Artie, do you have any questions or comments?
No comment, no questions.
Adam? Okay. So we'll take a vote. We'll do, um, one motion at a time. So the first, the first motion is to report to town meeting that the road has been completed and that the planning board recommends acceptance of the road as a public way. I'll take the roll. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous four to nothing. Second motion is, uh, that we vote to sign the, um, now I've lost the wording, mo- mo- motion to sign the.
The street acceptance plan?
Plan. When, uh, uh, when, when, when prepared by the town Public Works Department. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. So, Lee, if you would, uh, send those reports to the appropriate town officials. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to the Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals agenda. The Board of Appeals is meeting on Thursday, April twenty eighth. Case number one for eleven eighty three Highland Avenue is an item that is being continued for March seventeenth. So we have already, um, reviewed this one. Their case number two is three twenty nine Chestnut Street. They are applying to establish Code Wiz, a private school that runs coding and robotics classes for fifteen students, five staff personal persons looking for a waiver of, uh, parking. Requirements and parking design requirements for the property located at three twenty-nine. It says Central Avenue, but that's three twenty-nine Chestnut Street. In, in Needham. Do we have any questions or comments about this application, Gene?
Yeah, um, I took a ride around just looking at the various sites, um, and, uh. This is, is to be located in the basement level of this building. They, the, uh, access to the building is very awkward, you have to go down a set of, uh, wo- wooden steps, um, that. That, the, the front gradient goes down to the basement level where there's a glass front on the basement level. You go down a rather steep, seems to me, set of steps to access sit in the front. And then there's also a rear, um, entrance exit, and again, you have to go up the steps from the basement to go out the rear. Um, I guess there's no handicapped accessibility at all, there's no handicap parking space in the parking lot either. Is it, maybe it's the case that for a facility this small, there's no requirement for handicapped access?
I think we should maybe, maybe we should comment on that just to make sure that they, the Board of Appeals has, has checked with the building inspector to make sure it's, it's code compliant.
Yeah, so I had a concern, that's, I mean, that's the kind of concern I had was, uh, the difficulty of accessing, uh, the entrance and exit. So otherwise seemed like a fine use, and there's already, um, in the building, another, uh, like a tutoring center. Um, on the upper level with the, with the orthodontist, because orthodontists generally deal with children too. So it's, the whole building would be devoted to, uh, the needs of children.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Gene, you raise a very good point and, uh. And I think that Lee has, has summarized it very well for. For comment that we can make to the ZBA about, uh. I suppose whether it's code compliant and, um, meeting the handicapped accessibility and parking requirements of the code. Any other, uh, comments that we would like to make, Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
The only question I would have, and this has to do with, you know, asking, asking, you know, planning board members and Lee as far as the historical aspect, and that is. This is, this, this is an existing building, this has some existing businesses. And then they're looking to, to make sure they still have a, some business going on in there, so. What part does, not that I don't want it to be handicapped accessible, of course it'd be great, but what part does that play in? Them being able to rent out this space, continue to rent out this space. That's the only question I have, does it play any part, I honestly don't know.
I suppose that's really a question for the building commissioner when they. When they go to the building commissioner for their, for their build-out permit. Adam, do you have any questions or comments?
No, they've been addressed, thank you.
Okay.
So are we now talking about three twenty-nine, um, I mean, one, three, four, six, South Street?
Well, you know, I just want to close, close the loop, we, we're, we're all scheduled, prepare a comment to the, uh.
ZBA, which basically captures what was just described here about the code compliance and handicap accessibility and parking in particular.
Great, thank you, yes, the next one is their case number three thirteen forty-six South Street. Uh, an application for a special permit. Looks like it's parking, mostly parking questions, yes, to waive strict adherence of parking and parking design requirements. With regard to a planned increase in enrollment at a ch- at a childcare facility. Property is in a rural preservation, rural residence conservation district and in the neighborhood business district, so this is. This is done by kind of what I consider my neck of the woods, this is on, uh. South, South Street, but it's near Charles River Street, between Charles River Street and, and Fisher Street. Which is. A very interesting historical air, air, a- area, which is, which is why it's a neighborhood business district. It's kind of rural and residential, but there are, there are businesses there. Yes, Gene, what?
It, it appeared to me, just looking at the zoning map and also looking at the site, uh, that the frontage of the site. The, the essentially the use, the building is in the, um, neighborhood business district, but it has a very large rear yard. Uh, where they have a large play area, grassy play area. And, uh, I, I'm thinking that is the park that's in the, um, Rural Residence Conservation District. The, um, the, the property slopes down, um, and then. There's no opportunity, it seems, to add to the parking. Uh, it's, it's one of these situations where the front yard, it kind of looks like it maybe once was a ranch house.
It was.
But got, yeah, but got converted, so they put in more, you know, commercial looking windows. And the building's in pretty, you know, pretty good shape, nice windows, door in, in middle. But there's no striping on the parking area at all, it's just one of these, um, asphalt areas in the front, black asphalt without any striping or. You know, those things that stop your tires, um, and I just wonder, are they going to do anything like that? Or they're just going to leave it as it is? It's hard to see, even see how many parking spaces there are.
But. This is a. This, this is a ZBA application.
They just leave it up to them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, the question of whether we want to raise any concerns.
Yeah.
I think, I, I, I think we can leave that up, up to the ZBA.
Sure.
Gene, I thought that I counted about seven spots, you're right, I don't recall that it was striped, but. I did think that there was seven spots, plus I think they have the two-car garage. But my initial concern was before I drove by that. And I didn't realize this business had existed, yet another daycare, you know, in this area, uh, and that. You know, will be traffic coming in and out of South Street, which in the morning and at night, or drop off and pickup. You know, can be a, a pretty well-trafficked area. But then I, when I drove by, I saw that it was set back quite a bit from south. And, um, I mean, there's no turnaround radius, you just literally, there's no sidewalk, you just literally go right from the driveway. There's, uh, right into the street, but I guess we haven't heard any, you know, cause of any kind of problem, so. Uh, that was the only other question that I had, but.
Yeah, and, and you know, I've kind of lived in this area, uh, now for. Was forty years and, uh, back in the day when I was doing some serious running, I would run down there. It really is not heavily trafficked there. Gen- generally, the traffic on South Street, to, to the extent that it does come this far. Generally, uh, turns, turns on to Charles River Street. So, so there's, there's really very, very little traffic between Charles, Charles River Street and the. And the town line.
It's on my bike route, and I've, I've never observed. You know, any kind of intense traffic at all, but I just, you know, I don't, I haven't been driving on that ride, on that section at what would be drop-off and pickup hours, so. I don't have any other comment or questions.
Artie?
No, I'm very familiar with the area.
Shall we go with, uh, with, uh, no comment?
I'm content with that, yes, no comment.
Okay. Lee, do we have to take a vote on that? I don't think we do. You're, you're muted, Lee.
You, you should, you should vote them, yes.
Okay, well.
I moved up, we make no comment on, um, one, three, four, six, South Street.
So.
Okay. Motion made by Gene, seconded by Artie, Adam, you gotta move faster on this.
I appreciate, I appreciate the enthusiasm and excitement of the newest member. I won't contest.
You used to all the other boards him on, buddy, you used to all the other boards him on, gonna move quickly, gonna move quick.
Any further discussion, I'll take the roll, Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, I suppose we ought to have a, a motion on three twenty-nine Chestnut Street.
Some move.
Thank you, I have a second. Any discussion, I'll take the roll, Artie.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Gene.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous, and finally, the last one is. One thirty-two to one thirty-four Hillside Avenue, an application for a variance. This is an existing. Two-family house, which is going, the proposal is to tear it down and. Build a, another two-family house in the single residence B district, so it's, um. Uh, the, the demolition of and then the rebuilding of a pre-existing non-conforming. Use based on a variance which had previously been granted by the ZBA many years ago. Do we have any questions and discussion, Gene?
Yeah, again, I looked, I, I went and looked at this one too, and, uh, you know, I thought it was very strange, the initial grant of a variance. Back in, I think, nineteen seventy-two, and the package showed that the, the planning board at the time objected to the, the issuance of. Of such a variance. And, um, it appeared that there was a house in front. Which exists, you know, a two-family house side by side in front, then you go down a driveway. And there's a house in back, also a two-family house, and it's the house in back that they want to tear down and rebuild. And make, presumably make larger. And I had thought, just looking at the plan quickly, that there was nothing but a driveway. Uh, we happened to be talking with, with Lee today on another subject, so I raised this and, uh, um, she said that. Actually, it shows that the lot, that the back lot has, does have a twenty-foot frontage, was of course, is insufficient frontage. It's in a, a single residence. It's in a single residence B zone, isn't it? It's not in the general residence zone.
It's in the B zone.
Single residence B, yeah, it says it right in the notice here, um, and, uh. But, a- and in, indeed, it's, you check the plan again, Lee, it does have twenty-foot of frontage.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so it's like a, a lot with just a little tail that comes out to hillside, but when you actually look at this. It's, you recall the apartment building that we approved recently on Honeywell Street with the eight units? That's kind of right kitty corner to this in the back. If you were standing there looking at the two-family house in the back, you could see that house under construction over to the right. And immediately next to it is all of those townhouses, you remember the people in the townhouses were objecting to the, uh, construction of the, uh. Multifamily. So it's in a neighborhood where it's, um, and then behind the lot in question is the railroad right of way. So you're, it's in an area where, um, it fits in as it really looks like four units on one lot. But it fits in with its surroundings. Across the street, there are two-family, uh, units. Um, although it switches from, um, general residence. To single residence in the middle of the block across the street, but it's, it's generally two-family residences across the street. So after thinking about it and talking with Lee about it, um, I'm inclined to make no comment. Um, but I did want to explain that I did go and look at it and what I thought.
You, you making a motion for no comment?
I make a motion for no comment.
Thank you, Gene, do I have a second on that motion? We're, we're not finished with discussion.
Only haven't finished with discussion.
No, but once the motion is made, we'll continue with the discussion. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, now we'll continue with the discussion, Artie, do you have any?
Well, I, I guess my, my, my comment would be exactly what's going to be built there and how much, how much bigger in the properties are going to be and how much more green spaces are taken up, I guess. I mean, that's really it, for me, that, that's what, that's what it boils down to. How much bigger is the other property going to be within that spot, within that property, how many trees are going to go, that's what it really boils down to for me, at this point for that property.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
That was in the materials, wasn't it?
It was, I missed it in this case, yeah.
I didn't see, I didn't see what they're open, oh wait, it does say actually, I think already, what their open space is. But either way, George Jenta, I think, is representing the builder, he might still be, is he still on our call? Uh, he is, actually.
He is.
Do you wanna?
Yes, Alex, would you ask George to come over, please?
I'd be curious, Lee, while, while he's coming over, what authority the planning board has over the ZBA on these kinds of questions?
We don't have any authority other, other than to raise comments and questions and concerns. And recommendations, and therefore, who will accept them or reject them. But actually.
They're usually respectful of our comments, um.
Yes, they will respectfully reject our comments.
That's right on a Saturday night, that's quick. I like it.
George, you, you want to give us a little bit of information on this project about, um. Uh, the increase in the size of the, of the buildings and, and maybe trees being taken down and green space?
Oh, I'll try and, uh, address that as best I can, uh, I'm not sure, uh, I have to actually.
If you can refresh your memory on something, I'm sure you weren't prepared to discuss tonight.
Uh, as, as I'm pulling this up, I will tell you, so. This is, uh, there, there are a few of these floating around in town, this is actually going to be the fourth one. Uh, in my practice in town, uh, to go before the board where a two-family use was allowed by a use variance. And, um, you know, there aren't a ton of them, but there are several out there. And the, and the question always is, uh, one of the things the board always wrestles with is. You know, was it a specific plan that was approved, or was it a sort of generic use variance? And this one, like the other three that have come before it, uh, it was a generic use variance that basically said you can use. The, the property for two-family purposes. Uh, there have been, there are some other var- use variances that are floating around out there, where they are specific to the plan, the actual proposed. You know, addition or structure or whatever, in one case it was gas pumps. Um, but, but even though they're technically use variances, they are tied into, uh, a plan, and that, that's not the case here. So what we're technically doing is going for a, what, what really is a plan substitution. And the board looks at it, they kind of apply the same general analysis you would for a pre-existing non-conforming is, is in terms of. Is it substantially more detrimental? But they also add in, is it within sort of the four corners of the variance that was issued in terms of, does it change? The fundamental nature of the relief, and typically on these, you know, it often doesn't, as long as it isn't substantially more detrimental. And as a part of that, they also hold us to the requirements in Section one point four point. Ten, point four point. Seven, one point four point seven, with respect to reconstruction of two families in the single-family zone. Technically, those provisions don't apply because on their face, they only apply to pre-existing non-conforming. And this is, these situations are sort of outside of that. But nevertheless, all, all the applicants on these have, have held to those same standards, and the board applies those same standards. So basically that means a maximum, in this case, a maximum footprint size of twenty-five hundred square feet, maximum lot coverage of eighteen percent. Uh, no more than one car garage, uh, there's an exemption for detached, although in this case they are doing two attached one-car garages. The footprint size is like twenty-four eighty or twenty-four ninety, so it's just under the twenty-five hundred. But in terms of lot coverage, it's like, I think thirteen percent or fourteen percent.
Yes, I see that on the plans, it's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, and part of that is this is a decent-sized lot. I mean, it's like seventeen thousand plus square feet. So it's, you know, getting up there to almost the size of a double lot. So, you know, we look at it that something of this size fits nicely on there because it's such a large lot. And really, when you think about it, you know, twenty-five hundred square feet is no bigger than your average single-family house. In fact, a lot of the single-family houses are even bigger. So it's really kind of in keeping with the single-family size, which of course was the intent of section one four seven when that was adopted. But ten years ago or twelve, however, however, however long ago that was.
So twenty-five hundred square feet foot, footprint or, or total living space?
Footprint.
This, the, the.
Which includes the garage.
Yep, okay.
So just to give a little bit of context on this, the, uh, the requirement is twenty-five hundred square feet for a footprint. The existing structure already is roughly fifteen hundred square feet?
Yeah, and I, I was looking, I was looking at the, I was looking at the designs, remembering that, remembering that the.
The new, the new, just to answer your question, the new footprint is a thousand square feet bigger.
Yes.
So your question before about, you know, is it taking up more space on the lot? It's taking up a thousand square feet more than its current condition. And then the other comment I was going to make is that from the, from the architectures that we received in our packet, it's uh, each unit is roughly twenty-one hundred square feet on the first and second floor, and I would expect it'll probably market the basement maybe another, it might be around twenty-five hundred square feet.
So, so remembering that, as far as the lot coverage, I mean, granted, remembering that, part of that lot coverage is the L going to the street, which could never have any type of building on it at all anyway. So from a practical standpoint, from a practicality standpoint, it's a larger percentage than what, what, what it appears to be. Is from the rectangular size where any house could remotely be, it's a lot more than the thirteen percent or fourteen percent, whatever's being presented right now. It's a lot more than, than, than what it's, what it seems to be. There's a lot, a lot of that lot is heading towards Hillside Ave. And anyway, so it's, it's fairly big for the, it's, it's fairly big for the lot. I just contend it's fairly big for the lot. And, and a lot, a lot more green space is taken up. That my, so my object, my objection, my objection is the crowding of the lot. That's my objection.
So, so actually, i- if I may, Artie, I totally get your point. Um, however, if you actually crunch the numbers, the, 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 the dog leg or the, you know, the, the run that goes out to the street is roughly twenty-one hundred square feet. So if you take that off, you still have, you know, roughly a fifteen thousand square foot lot, which is still one and a half times the size. So yeah, the percentage goes up. But it's still, you know, it's, it's considering that the size of this footprint, the size of this house is really no bigger than a single family.
Yeah.
A fifteen thousand square foot lot, that's a pretty, I think, a pretty good size, you know, ratio. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind is even though it's an increase, a part of the increase is the two, right now, there's no attached garages. The cars just park outside. And so they're adding, it's about five hundred square feet or a little over five hundred square feet of garage space, which is a big part of that footprint. So even though it's a thousand square foot increase, half of that is basically the garages. So, y- you know, it kind of, it's a trade-off. On the one hand, now you don't have cars parking sort of all over the yard. Now, you know, they have garages, they can put the cars in. So this is always a trade-off with it. You end up a little bit bigger structure.
Yeah, so I can, I can appreciate, I can appreciate it. No, I can appreciate that, George. It's just.
So, Artie, are you, are you considering then um, requesting that we make a comment to the ZBA uh, that they carefully examine whether the increased footprint and the increased size is, um, is more detrimental than the current use given the loss of green space?
Yeah. If, if we, if we, if we are connecting the comment to the loss of green space, then the answer would be yes. Yeah, if we're connecting to that, the answer would be yes. Yes. I, I can, I can see the plan. I, I see, you know, the existing law, I see what is, I see what's going on. I can appreciate what the, I can appreciate what's trying to be accomplished here and so forth. Um, but my comment would be, as you're phrasing it there, the how it affects the detrimental loss of the green space within the area. Yeah. I'm, I'm fine, I'm, I'm whe- whether, whether, whether the board wants to adopt that, you know, obviously, it's your choice.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I just you know, I just take a stand on the fact that it's, it's, it's crowded, it's crowding in there, that's all. But I understand what the bill was trying to accomplish. I can appreciate where it's going on.
So we have a motion on the floor to make no comment and so to to, to have Artie's comment, we would have to vote no on the um, motion that's on the floor. Um, and then, and then Artie can we can then have the motion as I just stated it, which will be made by Artie and we'll hopefully have a second to it if we get there. So can we have some further discussion as to which of those two motions this board wants to adopt? Jean?
I, I prefer to adopt the no comment motion and let the consideration of such factors be up to the zoning board of appeals. Um, we usually comment only if we perceive some real irregularity. Um, and I don't see that here. Um, so I, I prefer to go along with the no comment myself.
Adam, you have a, a preference one way or the other?
I would, uh, I, I agree with Jean. I just do, to, to address another point that already a question that you had raised before, they, I think they are adding, uh, thirteen or fourteen trees.
Well, they're taking down, they're taking down quite a few, then adding some then adding a few, you know, a few small trees, but they're taking out some big ones, adding some small ones. If, if, if they do that, that's what would happen.
Um, I, I, we don't have a tree demolition plan.
I know, I know we don't.
No, that's, uh.
Yeah, I know, I know we don't. Yeah, I'm just, I, I'm just, I'm just voicing where, you know, you, I think you guys, I think you guys pretty much know where kind of where I fall on some of this stuff.
Yeah, well, you know, we now have two former conservation commissioners.
Yeah.
Although Artie's not former yet.
Not former yet.
Not former yet. Which, which makes for a healthier planning board, I would, I would, I would say. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the roll on Jean's motion for no comment. Adam?
Aye.
Jean?
Hi.
Artie?
No.
I'm gonna vote aye, we'll go with no comment, but, um, so that's, that's what we'll report to the ZBA. Lee, um, but Artie, you raise a legitimate concern that I'm gonna keep in the back of my head in the future as these these come up and and we continue to to try to preserve as much green space as we can in town and and try to keep the trees. One of these days, we'll move forward on a tree bylaw. Unfortunately, it's out of the planning board's hands. It's something that the that the select board has said is their province, not ours. And, um, you know, we, we had this discussion when I joined the planning board, which is now seven years ago. And, uh, you know, the planning board wanted to move forward at that time with a tree bylaw and the, the select board told us that we were, we were out of our lane.
Well.
Okay.
No, I appreciate you, I appreciate you hearing me out though. Thank you, guys, appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you. So that takes care of the ZBA agenda and George, thank you for for coming aboard and answering our questions on this. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Bye, Adam.
Okay.
There is one more, but we're not going to make comments on that one, right? Needham Pool and Racket Club, do we even have to vote?
Oh, was there a?
Yeah, um, one, five, four, five.
Yeah.
Review of the construction and operations of the paddle court.
Now, so we, so there's a last, yeah, it was on a second page and I I, I did print the second page and I was looking for it and I just found it again. So, um, fifteen forty-five Central Avenue, we review and construction of the paddle court facility at the Needham Pool and Racket Club.
I don't think I saw that. Was there an update to the plan?
No, I didn't, I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything in the packet about it, actually.
Oh.
So I don't really think there's any comment.
No, I think it's just a project report. I don't think it's anything you need to comment on.
Yeah, it's a review of the construction and operations. So they're reviewing it, um.
Can we just ignore it?
I don't think it's, it's not on our.
I guess it's not really.
It's not an item, I don't think that requires, it's not an application, it requires your comment.
It sounds familiar, though. Was this something that was already on the ZBA agenda and was already in front of us on the original application?
Yes, they already issued, I think, a permit for these paddle courts, um, with conditions. And I think they're, I think they're just reviewing now their, how it's operating.
I do notice as I drive by, because this is right around the corner from my house, that they've added a second sign. So NPRC has a second sign that says NBTC. Or NPTC now is second RC, so I think they're doing a name change over there. Okay, so I guess that does it for the ZBA agenda. Uh, the next item on our agenda are minutes. We have quite a list of quite a few minutes here. We have minutes of December twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Four twenty-two, February one, twenty-twenty-two, February nine, twenty-twenty-two. February eleven, twenty-twenty-two, February fifteen, twenty-twenty-two. Um, is there another one here? No, that's, that's it. As is our usual procedure, I'm gonna turn it over to Jean.
Yes, um, you know, I thought I had printed out everything that was in our packet that was relevant to the minutes. But the only ones I printed out were of February one, February nine, February eleven, and February fifteen. Um, I know there was another one that I reviewed, but very much at the last minute. And there were quite a few areas, you know, when I have questions, I mark them in yellow. And, uh, I, I, I forget if that was the, um, December one or the January one. Uh, Lee, but, um, since I don't have either of those in front of me, and I do recall that one of them, I, there were questions. And, uh, it was only distributed to the board as far, as a red line by me at the last minute. So I just to put off consideration of those minutes. So what I would offer is a motion to accept the following minutes. February one, twenty-twenty-two. February nine, twenty-twenty-two. February eleven, twenty-twenty-two, and February fifteen, twenty-twenty-two with the red line changes, uh, indicated on the minutes that were distributed.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. I assume Artie is going to not take part in this discussion since he wasn't here.
Correct.
Uh, I have no comments or questions. Adam, do you?
Excuse me, um, I know we have a practice of not have, not allowing a board member to vote on minutes where the board member was not present at the meeting. Actually, I actually was not president, present at the February fifteen. So if you think we should put that off too um, in order to have a, a three-person vote on it. Or, or I will we'll separate that out and I simply won't vote on it.
I, I, I think that we need to, um, to defer February fifteen.
Okay, defer February fifteen. So I amend my motion uh, to include only the February one, February nine, and February eleven minutes. And the motion is to accept those minutes with the red line changes.
Thank you.
I'll, I accept that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll call the roll, uh, Adam.
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those, those minutes in February, except February fifteen, are accepted. Adam, you're still vice chair, so you'll get to sign your name.
I'm sure there might be. Here, I can hear an echo. Does anyone else hear an echo?
No? Yeah, I just heard an echo very quickly just now. I hadn't heard it before.
That's gone now too.
All right, summer schedule. Alex, you want to come back in on that? There you are, well, you're, you're.
Diana set the summer schedule. The little things in life. I've just been getting asked about it and I've been waiting till we had our full board.
You want to wait till the clock is here?
No, no, no.
You spoke on a time, you have a calendar?
I've checked in with her. And she she's not really sure what her, um, summer schedule is, but she says that she may be living in Vermont part of the summer and coming back at times. Um, and so she was hoping to, um, be remote at least for the July meeting. If possible, and then maybe come, sort of like, pull a gene, do a swing back in for the August meeting if she has to. Um, but I wasn't sure what, if people know their schedules. But one possibility is July twelfth.
I will be away July twelfth.
All right.
Would you be able to zoom in?
No, I'm gonna be up in New Hampshire where where things are kind of spotty. In the next.
And are you away that whole week?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm, yes, yes, I'm, I'm away that entire week of, uh, of July tenth.
I would probably propose uh, the week of the, uh, July eighteen. We're dropping our we're dropping our son off to the same summer camp I attended in Nova Scotia. Uh, uh, and I think we go, we go up at the end of June, uh, the twenty-seventh. I can definitely do uh, hybrid and, and zoom in if I needed to, and then I think we're, and then I think we're away, like, driving back around the fourth. That week.
Why, what am I, of July?
Yes, of, yeah, uh, so the eighth, and then, then we have to go pick them up at the end of July. So we'll be gone for part of the, of the week of the twenty-fifth, but we haven't set our dates exactly. And then I know in August, uh, we're gonna go uh, my whole family, it's the first time in years that, uh, because of COVID, that our whole family is going to get together, which I think will be in uh, in Prince Edward Island and will require quite a drive. And then I think is the.
No more of a drive than Nova Scotia.
Not to Halifax, but to the border, yes, because you either have to take the ferry or you have to take Confederation Bridge. So you extend past Moncton.
I love Prince Edward Island. Went there once.
So does the nineteenth work for people?
Yes, we, the nineteenth.
That should be fine for me.
The nineteenth is fine for me. I'm, I'm home in July, um, so no problem.
Is the nineteenth worth for Natasha?
I think Natasha can zoom in. And as long as we have a quorum and the chair is present, we should be able to make that work.
So.
Is that correct, Lee?
So Lee and Alex, are, are we, are we all set for hybrid meetings?
Pardon me?
Are we all set for, for doing hybrid meetings?
We're set, we're not, we're set for doing a hybrid meeting starting on June the seventh, when we do MUSI. We're not set before that time. Under the state law, we can stay Zoom till July.
Right, I'm fo- I'm focusing in on the summer schedule.
The summer schedule is a little bit dicey in the sense that the governor's order goes, I think, through July fifteenth.
That's correct.
And the issue is.
And the issue is that this, the town has to accept the provision of the open meeting law that allows for hybrid meetings, and the select board haven't, hasn't done that yet. Or this, or the state law needs to be changed. I, I'm assuming that something's gonna happen that's gonna allow for hybrid meetings after July the fifteenth, but I'm not set on exactly what that's gonna look like. It's because, you know, there are two ways.
Or if it'll be done by then.
Or if it will be, yeah, I'm not sure.
Require in person.
As I recall, the, the state law that calls for acceptance, didn't, didn't, do still have to have a quorum present in person? And then other members can be, can come in by hybrid. So that does help with scheduling. If you have a couple, one or two members who have to come in remotely.
I mean, I guess, I guess to be safe, if we, if we, if we could do July before the fifteenth and we're clinging on what's gonna happen. If we could choose a date before the fifteenth, that would probably be safer.
I'm, I'm away.
Yeah, you're away, okay. Then.
Week of the tenth, but what about, like, the end of the week of the fourth, like, like, meeting on a non Tuesday? Like the seventh?
That might work for me. I have to check with my wife, because I don't know exactly what date we plan to be back. We probably, we, we probably we probably could do the seventh.
It's fine with me.
Lee, on the hy, on the hybrid meetings, we have to have a quorum. Does that mean that if we're, if we're holding a hearing, we have to have at least four members present?
I don't know the definitive answer to that.
Can you check with Chris Heep on that, please?
Yes, I will. I will.
Four anyways?
What?
Don't we need, regardless of the governor's order, don't we need four anyways?
No, if you've got, if you've got a quorum, if the select board votes to have hybrid meetings after July fifteenth. And I wish, Lee, that you would pressure Kate to get the board, the select board to make a decision on this.
I have been asking repeatedly. I have been asking, Paul.
Then, then I think that in terms of having a quorum to actually hear the hearing and vote on the hearing, it includes the planning board member that is zooming in. Member of members. That are zooming in. So the question is for purposes of a hearing where we have three members present in the room.
Right.
And two members zooming in. Or even one member zooming in, we have a quorum for the hearing.
I, I understand the question. I'll, I'll pose it.
I will, yeah, I, I knew you understood the question. I wasn't sure Adam understood the question.
So we'll get, we'll get clarity from Chris.
Yes.
And eventually from the select board, it sounds like.
It sounds like the two meeting dates where we are right now are July seventh is a Thursday. And, I mean, or Tuesday, July nineteenth. Which is obviously after the July fifteenth, which just makes it a little more complicated, because we don't really know what's going on, and Natasha might be away.
Right. Now, we're meeting on June twenty one. So July, so July seventh and June twenty one is still is still more than two weeks, so. So I, I, I kind of think that July seventh would be, would, would be fine. It's not too close to our next prior meeting. I could, I could do July seventh. Or sometime the week of the eighteenth.
I mean, I'm also gonna have to do it, you know, at that point, chair, vice chair with, you know, with Lee to figure out the, you know, what our agenda is gonna look like coming up at that time. And if there were, you know, what other planning initiatives we want to embark on. Plus, I have to check with my wife on that date specifically, but.
Yeah.
I, I, I I think we need to be aware of these. If you, Alex, can you just touch base with with Natasha, so she is aware of the dates that we're talking about as well?
Yeah. And do you wanna circle back with us after you find out if the.
I will. I will.
Okay.
And what do we want to do about August?
Yeah, August, I'll be on Cape Cod the entire month. But I'll either zoom in if, assuming hybrid meetings are allowed. Or I will drive home. It's not that far, you know, it's not like flying home from Colorado.
Lee, we can't have the meeting at Jean's place on the Cape?
Not with the grandchildren running around.
Well, I thought we were all going to New Hampshire in July, Paul, so I guess, I guess, I guess we could go to the Cape in August.
That's hard enough. Usually I go to somebody else's house. Because I can't possibly zoom into a meeting in our, at our cottage. There's too many grandchildren.
So what about the ninth or the sixteenth?
Uh, nine, what?
The night, August ninth or August sixteenth?
Difference to me.
Right now, they both work for me.
August nine, that's a Tuesday, or August sixteen, that's a Tuesday. Yeah, doesn't matter.
They I have to confirm my date in, we're saying August nine or August sixteen. That, that, that's fine, actually. I'm here.
And Artie?
I'm fine. I'll, I'll make, I'll make dates work. I'm, I'm going away at various times, but I can float my dates.
Okay, cool. So it sounds like everyone is fine with either the ninth or the sixteenth.
Correct.
So I'll check in with Natasha. And hopefully, you know what, maybe we could try to finalize this on the morning of April twenty fifth, which is a little less than a week.
Yep.
That would be great if we could.
And I'm, I'm concerned also about the housing plan working group meeting in June. It's a very important meeting. And I know that a poll went out. Is there, is there any certainty on the date of that meeting yet, Alex?
Nope. I'm gonna have to get back to you early next week, because I'm away the rest of the week. But it's been pulling teeth trying to get dates, so.
Okay. I just hope it's not be, well, there are certain days I'll be actually traveling on an airplane. There are certain days I can't possibly make it work, so I just hope.
You can email me if you want. We can take it out of this meeting, but you can email me.
I can do what?
You can email me what the dropped ad dates are on that.
Oh, okay. Well, I did answer the poll, so.
Okay.
Oh, we're not gonna schedule a meeting on a day where you're not present, Jean, believe me.
I really hope you wouldn't do that.
No.
All right, so our gender item was finalize summer schedule, and we failed to accomplish that. But we had.
We're closer than we were before.
So report from planning director and board members.
Okay, I guess I have a couple things. At the last planning board meeting, you asked me to check in with George Genta Junior and the petitioner for, which was Bruno De Fazio, on the rezoning proposal that came in by citizens petition for the property located along Hunting Road, close to Cheney Street, to find out if they were still interested in pursuing a rezoning scheme that would convert it from single residence A to single residence B.
Are you, are you referring to eight eighty-eight Great Plain?
No, I'm referring to the property along, there was a, a property along Hunting Road. I think probably starting really right where Cheney Street intersects Hunting, Hunting Road. Or Greendale Avenue, then going past Kendrick Street, up, up a little bit up Hunting Road. There was a wedge of lots located, I think.
Oh, yes, yes, and yes, I know exactly.
On the route, on the Route one twenty-eight side of Hunting Road.
Yeah, yeah.
So there was a zoning proposal to convert that from single residence A to single residence B. I think most of that area at one time had been zoned, I think, for lots at a twenty thousand square foot size. And then it was rezoned, I think, to single residence A. So they were proposing to bring it down to single residence B. There wasn't a lot of support for that at town meeting. I, so I went back to George and to the guy, Bruno De Fazio, who I think initiated the effort. And I think they both feel that proceeding with single res, the, the, the conversion from single residence A to single residence B was just not gonna get a lot of support, and so they were willing to concede that. They did suggest that the plan, that we might want to consider changing the front yard setback in that area down to what the front yard setback is in single residence B, which was comparable to what it was for the twenty thousand square foot lots at the time when they were created before they were converted. Which would allow people to put additions on their properties without even go through a ZBA process. So in other words, leave the single residence B zoning in place and perhaps look at an overlay district that would just change the front yard setbacks, recognizing, I think, their, their history. I'm bringing that standard down to what the B zone is. So that's what they had indicated their interest was at this point in time, but that they weren't, they certainly recognized that the idea of converting it from A to B was not something that had broad support.
Do they, do they realize that it only requires a majority vote under the changes in the State Zoning Act?
I think George certainly realizes, realizes that.
And still, they're discouraged.
And while that was, they were discouraged when I talked to them. And, and they, and Bruno basically told me his real goal was just, you know, what they were really running up against was that the houses were too close to the street. So now when you wanted to put an addition on them, you can meet the set, the side setback standard. But, you know, you were going to the ZBA, and then if you were extending the property along the front yard, that was considered a variance. So, I mean, that's where they, that's where they landed, so.
But I, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed, because I thought really all town meeting needed was to be reassured with, so that the facts were presented carefully. The town meeting felt that the facts hadn't been adequately presented to town meeting. So there was something like fishy going on, and I thought if we simply presented it. So they know clearly what the potential is if you ever acquired all those lots. One person acquired all those lots and then divided them. What the, what is the potential? And then, you know, real, just recognize the, that that actually never happens. The idea of site assembly of twenty-three lots is just not gonna happen. So.
Well, I think, I, 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 I don't think there was a concern. You know, I agree with you, and I think town meeting would agree with you, but the concern was, well, what if you acquired, like, two or three or four lots? And then, you know, subdivided that into, you know, if, if you acquired four, four twenty thousand square foot lots and cre, and put it into a ten thousand square foot district, so now you can take four lots and create eight lots. You know, it's possible some of those lots might be a little bit larger than twenty thousand square feet. You accumulate them. Maybe it's nine lots that you get. You know, you've gone from four, four lots to eight or nine lots. That's where town meeting had a problem. And that, my recollection is that the that concern was raised fairly adamantly by the, a then select board member. Was no longer a select board member, but will still be on town meeting. And, you know, that carries a lot of weight for a lot of town meeting members.
Yeah, I agree, Paul, that, that's what I remember as well. That, 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 this, the comment was, is a simpler way to accomplish what they wanted to accomplish. And there was certainly a question mark of what the, I think, I think understandably so, if, if they're going, if what would happen as far as then acquiring four or five lots, as you're saying, and what, what was really the goal? When there was, when there was perhaps a simpler way to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish.
And you also, I'm keeping in mind, Gene, that this isn't our article. I understand your position, but it's not like the planning board has looked at this and said, yeah, this is something that we want to do. No, somebody came to us with a citizens petition. And we said, yeah, we're okay with that, but that's not like it's ours to argue for.
Well, what if, if the housing plan working group focused on this as an opportunity to create additional lots, smaller, single-family homes?
That's, that's a different story. If your group thinks that this area should be rezoned to single residence B, then, then this board should definitely seriously look at that and and, 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 and consider the recommendation of your committee.
It would create more houses, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't make them affordable, but it would certainly create more houses.
Yeah. But I think it needs to be studied by essentially a surveyor engineer to really get how many, how many lots would, would it mean? Because if you look at our zoning map and you just look at these tiny little lots, they're quite deep. So you have to take into account not only the area, but the frontage. So there may not be that many opportunities for new lots when you consider the frontage requirements. So.
Raise your point, Jean. It makes a lot, for Artie's point here about affordability. It makes the lot, ma, maybe it's not a lot of money to go to the ZBA, but it's certainly enough money that if you're somebody who's looking for affordable housing to be in town, and you're looking at it and you go, yeah, but I would want more room on the house, and I have to go through the whole ZBA process. And that's gonna cost me money I don't have.
From my point of view, this doesn't seem like it's the right area to achieve that goal. Because you, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna sell these homes for one and a half million dollars. That, you know, they're not, especially when they're gonna be able to add another four to six homes at least.
But don't you think that the fact that the homes back up on, on Route one twenty-eight and that Hunting Road is itself a busy road affects the value of the, of the houses?
I think, I think that that's why it would potentially be one point eight million.
Okay. You know better than I do on that, for sure.
You know, I.
Let it, let it go for now. So what do we do as far as the town meeting vote to report back to town meeting? Do we say anything at town meeting, Lee?
Well, I think that you're gonna have to, yeah, I think, I'm not sure if you formally have to actually give a report. I mean, it was referred back to you for a report, so they may be looking for us to kind of, to, to give a report back. Yeah, so maybe we just, you know, if you decided that, you know, you're not gonna, do you wanna, do you wanna look at it for a change in the front yard setback? Or do you want, what do you want to do?
I think, I, I, I think our report back is simply that the proponents of, are withdrawing their article and that the proponents are reexamining what they, what they may want to do for the future. And I would suggest, and, and I would suggest that as a handout at town meeting. I don't want to stand up on, on the floor of town meeting and do that report. You know, we don't, we generally don't have town meeting reports, even, even, even though our warrant calls for it other, other than the finance committee.
I move, I move to, uh, accept our chair's report as articulated now.
And, and have that written up by a, a planning director as a written report?
Written up as a handout. We can approve it at a.
Next meeting.
I can second, I'll second that.
Well, actually, no, we have to approve it. We have to approve it in our next meeting, because I don't think we're gonna have another meeting between the twenty-fifth and and, and town meeting.
Okay, so essentially you just want me to indicate that the applicant has, has, has indicated that they're not interested in going forward with a rezoning of a property as it was originally proposed.
Correct.
And they, and they may be looking for some other modifications that, in terms of setback adjustments.
Yeah. That's fine.
And that the, the planning board will, of course, study whatever.
Is proposed.
Is proposed, yeah.
Okay, fine. Um, the only other thing I I had is I just wanna let you know that I'm going to a meeting tomorrow morning. Um MIPA, you know, the MUSI Properties, they uh the Highland Science Center filed an ENF um with MIPA. Um and so MIPA does a uh a consultation session, which they're gonna be doing remotely tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. That I will be attending. I think there'll be some other uh department managers from Needham that will be attending. Um Rebecca from GPI is gonna be there. I had asked her to take a look at the um ENF that was submitted, the traffic report. Um to advise us, or me actually, on what kind of comments, if any, the town should be raising um on the ENF. And so she's gonna be participating in that meeting with me tomorrow. And so, and and then I think the comments are due, any comments the town wants to provide are due, um I think at Ap- April twenty eighth, so I am participating in that. Um and I think I told you at the last meeting that we have that filing. It's formally been filed. We've created a dedicated place on the website. There are all information relative to this project is being stored, um which includes the ENF, um the announcement of MIPA's meeting tomorrow morning. Um as well as the application and the filing that we have. And then we're looking at doing the hearing on June seventh at Powers Fall.
Okay, um what is, um uh tell me more about the ENF. Is it because of the size of the uh proposed development that it requires in ENF?
Yeah, I think it's 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 the trip generation, the traffic is being generated. So they basically submitted the traffic report um into into MIPA.
Okay. Okay. Is it because there's a state highway so nearby or just in general? It's because it's a state highway. Uh huh. Oh, I see. Okay. Okay.
So that's tomorrow at ten, it's it's remote. I can, if you wanna, if you wanna sit in on the meeting, Jean, I can send you the link.
That would be helpful. Are you, uh do you need anything if we don't meet between now and the time with that the town's required to, the deadline for the town to submit its comments? Are you able to submit any comments?
Well, you mean again on April the twenty fifth and the comments are due on the twenty eighth.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So um I mean Rebecca had g- had sent me today a series of questions that she had that she had come up with or things we might wanna consider asking, so. It's probable we're gonna have some comments. I, on the traffic side of it, I don't know if there's gonna be any comments coming from DPW. Um on top of what GPI recommends. Or whether or not the health department will have any comments because of the contamination on the site. But I'm just really been focused on coordinating the traffic component of it. And making sure that the other divisions in town that may wanna comment are aware of it so that they can feed me their comments.
Like health.
Like health and DPW, right? I don't know if there's any comments they have.
If if we're moving on from that, I have a question on another subject, uh should be a quickie.
I'm having a diabetes fail. I just need to go grab an instrument. I'll be right back.
Okay, I think I can ask my question in the meantime. Uh since the brewery's article is withdrawn. Uh do planning board members still need to um attend the warrant, the legal women voters warrant meeting? And cover the different rooms and be paid to answer questions?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, we would, the only thing would, I, oh, the only thing would be the budget, but I don't really know if there'll be any questions on the budget or the small repair grant program. So I don't really know. Let me, let me follow up.
As a member of the community preservation committee, um um I've been asked to cover a a room for the community preservation committee. And conflicts with the what, uh the room I'd have to, I'd have to be in two places at once if I had to cover a room A and B for the planning board.
I don't know why you'd need to cover a room.
Doesn't make any sense. Why, why?
Jean, what, what, what room are you, are you covering for CPC?
ENF.
And who's presently scheduled for ENF?
Me?
Yeah, so maybe, Adam, you could sw- if we have to do it. It sounds like we don't have to, though.
I just don't know if if they expect to have you answer questions on the small repair grant program because that's being done by the department or street acceptance, although those are pretty minor articles, or that's gonna just be the select board.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's. I'm not sure that we have to be there, but you know, check with uh, check with Jean McKnight. She's on the legal woman voters.
Well, I can, I mean, I certainly I can ca- check with Karen um and see what she thinks. Cheryl Katie, Karen Price is no longer the president, but.
We sent them the list. We sent them the list of who was gonna be covering rooms, so we'll follow up to make sure to let them know you're not gonna be there.
That would be the idea, yeah.
Okay. Anything else then on directors and board members?
Yeah, a lot of us at town meeting members would be there anyway, perhaps as town meeting members in in our precinct rooms.
Yeah, I plan to be in my precinct room anyway. But I'm gonna be wearing a mask despite what happened today. Um, so in correspondence. We have um in our packets, in in our packages or online. We had three emails from Louis Wolfson regarding the um group hub and micro brewery warrant article. And we have a legal notice from the Dover Planning Board about um zoning amendments to to the Dover um zoning bylaws. Interestingly, they, they have an article about accessory apartments. Uh so even Dover is, seems to be going there. Um, and I don't know whether this fits under correspondence or not, but you know, because I guess it came from the warrant committee. Uh we have a copy of the annual town meeting warrant. Which um looks to me like uh it's nine thirty five. We have a, an earlier than usual close.
Motion to adjourn in honor.
I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet.
Well, also, just just in terms of correspondence, you did have some emails from, I think, from Lou Wilson on the brewery use, which I. I'm sorry, I I missed it, sorry.
Yep, three. So um, so, so I'm gonna assume that our meeting is shorter because Artie is here instead of Marty, so Artie, I thank you for, for bringing us to a shorter meeting.
That is not true.
And I want you.
Never.
I want you to keep that up, Artie.
No problem, Paul. That's the goal, buddy, that's the goal.
Okay, now I'll take that motion to adjourn, Adam.
In honor of uh uh Artie's ascension to the planning board, uh I move to uh adjourn.
I second that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will take the vote. Adam Block.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Nay, just kidding, aye.
The chair votes aye, we're adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, thanks, everyone.